Shields? And Dr. Burks.
And then add to the committee reports. Success?
Yeah, we met. We met two weeks ago and a couple of things that are on the agenda for tonight that we discuss, specifically the Mastery Connect, the assessment tool that we'll be using, the assessment platform. A little bit of short presentation about that tonight, and we're looking forward to that. So that'd be a district-wide adoption if we decide to grow that up. But the committee liked everything that they heard at the presentation a couple of weeks ago, and we'll hear some more information tonight. And then also the other issues related to the enrollment and our remote learning plan, which we'll also hear a little bit from Dr. Baugh about the consolidated district plan as well. So it's a good meeting with some really fantastic presentations going together. So thank you for those who presented, and we'll hear more this evening.
I just want to comment, Sean, that as we talked about it in summer session, the enhanced communication between the committees, we would have reports that were given in time to fashion, which we absolutely get very well written. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Community of learners. Yeah, okay. Excellent.
Yes, again, we had another excellent meeting. We had the discussion of the debt refunding opportunity, and Bob Lewis made an excellent presentation from PMA, walked through it, and that can be, of course, on today's agenda. We talked about the building and ground restructuring plan, aside from the district strategic plan, and the savings that not having used somewhere else by vendors should be very significant as years go on. As a group, we got back together again, and we talked about our consolidated district plan. And finally, we did talk on, committee talked on some of our budget updates.
Okay, thank you. I don't think whole community met, did it face us in the den now? So then back to committee of learners.
We've just basically entirely, we use the nature of that nature that you were discussing tonight. And then another topic that I'm sure very, we're going to be working on, working a restructuring our committee to make it a stronger committee and more functional, so that we all feel like we're learning something.
Yeah, we have a committee of the whole as well, and we had to hire some staff. So we actually came together. Thank you, Ms. Shields. All right, so moving on to the consent agenda, and I need the full motion read, please.
Is that working?
Yep.
Okay, approve the minutes for the July 19th, 2021 Board of Education meeting, August 9th, 2021 committee meeting, the activities fund report for July 2021, the final bills and claims for July 2021 in the amount of $1,181,382.42. And the bills and claims for August 2021 in the amount of $2,257,993.11. Foyer requests received July 23rd, 2021, and responded to on July 28th, 2021, from Rob Hassan, requesting all administrative conversation for the 2021-2022 this year. Foyer request received July 27th, 2021, responded to on July 21st, 2021, from Jared Reed at Smartville Pure, requesting purchase orders and vendor list from 3/23/2021. Foyer request received August 6th, 2021, responded to on August 9th, 2021, from Kevin Tomshough from Postal Source, requesting signed passports or postage meter machines and or holder equipment. Foyer request received August 9th, 2021, responded to on August 16th, 2021, from Tim Gleason, requesting the return to school parent survey results, and assured November 11th, 2019, and November 25th, 2019, effective reception of orders. Second.
Moved in second, additional comments? Roll call, please.
Dr. Kattula?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. And then add to the treasure reports.
Nothing too exciting to report. We're only one, I'm sorry. We're only one month into the year, but our levels of both revenue and expense were very similar July of this year to July of last year. A couple items of note, our levy was less than it was a year ago, but if you remember, we had COVID delays in payments, so we saw some bleed into July. And this year, on the contrary, we actually saw 52% of our revenue we achieved actually before the end of the last fiscal year. So that's really just a timing difference. And we did get our Q4 payment, Dr. Brenner, from the state, so.
They're just printing that money.
Yeah, so we now only have like two small drivers that payments that are due. Nothing too exciting to report on the expenditure side, other than we continue to see strong transition fees. We had about $30,000 in our grand reserve area, and then about $39,000 in the rest of the district. So obviously, once we have our budget approved in September, then we'll also be looking at kind of what we're doing on a yearly basis versus the budget. But right now, the budget is just tentative and not yet approved.
Do you know, Mindy, are most of these homes that are being built with children that will be attending the district, or do we have any ideas on that?
I mean, some of them are larger homes, so you would assume that they, you know, that they could have students in them.
So I've sold 25 new homes this year, and I would say 50% have children.
Okay.
And that's. But some were inter-district.
Right, right.
Moving to town, yeah. So I'm going to say that you're picking up, you are getting some nice, great new families in.
And that's somewhat consistent with the assumptions that we make in terms of, you know, kind of the numbers of homes when we're doing our projections for enrollment. So, but we'll continue to monitor that, and we'll continue to work with the city as we look at enrollment projections in the fall to see what they're seeing in terms of new construction, because obviously that has an impact on our levy as well.
Kendall County was the only county in the state of Illinois to see growth. That growth was about 13.7%.
There was an article today, in April, wasn't there, for in terms of the size of towns, Aurora still second, but they lost, I think, 5% of their population. Joliet moved up, but they still lost like, it's crazy.
Yeah, we were the seventh highest location in the state of Illinois in terms of growth over the past, over the past year or so.
Yeah, most districts are losing.
Every day.
I think I heard an estimate last week that even CPS is down over 100,000.
Yep, 100,000, from that last week.
And they're seeking, I think it's a lot because of what we did last year, how we continue to focus on the kids and what's best for the kids.
That's right.
I make a motion to approve the treasure report as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, additional comments? Let's do a roll call, please.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Burks?
Yes.
Dr. Kattula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Brenner, sorry, I did it out of order.
All right, now, but we have a series of personnel recommendations to handle all of our student growth. So need motions on the table, please.
Motion to approve the additional positions for the 2021-22 school year as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion?
Just for the board to note, of the 13 items or positions that are on this agenda item, it equates to approximately 6.1 additional FTE, all due to an increased enrollment.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Kattula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. Now we have a speech-language pathologist services position.
Motion to approve the speech-language pathologist contract services for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Second. Moved in second, additional discussion?
Just this item is to meet students' aid payments.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Kattula?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. Then we have a co-curricular hire.
Motion to approve the co-curricular hire as presented. Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Kattula?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. Then we have some resignations.
Motion to approve the resignations as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have some transfers, a lot of transfers.
Motion to approve the transfers as presented. Second.
Moved in second, additional discussions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a thank you to our teaching staff, who was willing to take these overloads. Certainly, if they were not willing to do that for the betterment of our students, we would not be able to run some of the program.
Right, yes, that is appreciated.
Very, very, very dearly appreciated. All right, moved in second, any other additional comments? Roll call, please, Kathy.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Kattula?
Yep.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. And then last, we have some additional hires.
Motion to approve the hires as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion?
Just a big thank you to our administrative team and the staff that participated in the interview process. Hiring this many individuals as close to school is a demand on their time.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Kattula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. Just before we go on to the other topic, this is like, this is for the teachers. Not only did you give us everything you had last year, we had supply homes this summer, and many of them worked all summer. Many of them took overloads this summer, and then you're seeing additional overloads to meet in the fall. So we speak, we speak to all of you, promise we appreciate your dedication in, you know, offering all these programs, giving the kids a place to go, and being able to stay open 182 days last year, and then being able to make sure these kids had somewhere to go this summer, and then making sure we can offer all these programs. We have a shortage of teachers all over the place, and we so dearly appreciate your dedication. So, and for all of us on the board, I know we started today. I know we weren't able to celebrate like we usually do with the breakfast and everything, but just thank you very much, and we're really excited to welcome the kids on Thursday.
Absolutely.
Okay, so now on to old business, we have the approval of debt refunding parameters.
Yes, I just wanted to give a little bit of background. We talked about this at length at the Operational Excellence Committee meeting. Bob Lewis from PMA came and gave a presentation. And essentially, we, our 2012 and 2013 bonds are callable, so essentially, we can now refinance them, so to speak, if you want to use, you know, kind of language for your own home. And we think it was going to be advantageous to do so. The current average rate is about 3%, and we expect that the all-in rate will approximate 1.386% upon the sale of these bonds. So that would result in approximately $700,000 of potential savings to taxpayers. So we would actually see a difference in the levy for that piece. One of the things that we did as a part of this process was that we have to go out to a credit rating agency and get our credit evaluated. We had done that, if you remember, back in the fall, and with Moody's, and they held us flat as to, they gave us our same rating. PMA thought that we might be able to get a better rating if we looked at standard and pores. And we had a presentation the day after the Operational Excellence Committee meeting. Dr. Simpson was there, Craig Wesley was there, myself, we were there. And we actually got a two, kind of, a two credit rating adjustment upwards. So we were extremely pleased. And really, they talked about all of the things that we've done over the past, you know, especially the last five years, but even prior to that, in terms of shortening our debt, in terms of our robust fund balance policy, in terms of the fiscal responsibility that we've shown, in terms of the growth that's going on in this area, and the strong income levels. And so that actually could potentially lead to a little bit more savings. When we, when they calculated the 700, that was before we got that credit rating increase. So I just really wanted to thank the board, you know, for the fiscal responsibility that they have shown, and been, I think, very prudent in terms of figuring out where do we want to make investments, and where can we save some money. We've done a number of projects over the last few years to, you know, find ways that we could find more money to do good things for kids and still be fiscally responsible. So tremendously exciting results, so we're really, we're really happy with that. And then now, we're actually going to go through the process. So if anybody doesn't have any questions, I can turn it over to Dr. Burks.
Okay. So I'm going to read this. The next item for consideration is the issuance of not to exceed $15,600 general obligation bonds to be issued by the district pursuant to Article 19 of the School Code, the purpose of refunding certain of the district's outstanding bonds, and the Board of Education will consider the adoption of a resolution providing for the issue of said bonds and a levy of the direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest thereof. The resolution sets forth parameters for issuance of said bonds and sale, therefore, by designated official of the district, and that he will summarize the pertinent items of the said parameters. Let me try to read that.
Yes.
So manner of the sale is public, competitive, negotiated underwriting, and private placement sales are authorized. The Board understands that the plan is for the sale to be public, competitive, length of maturity no later than 1-1-2-0-2-6, maximum rate of interest 4%, minimum purchase price 97%, maximum levy 66.2 million, minimum savings requirement 2% per amount of the refunded bonds.
And now that the resolution will now be considered.
All right, Ashley will make the motion.
So much fun. I admire your time for doing this every time. Move to approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $15,600,000 general obligation refunding school bonds of community unit school district number 115, Kendall and Kane Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of said school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest of said bonds, and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Need a second?
Second.
Moved in second, additional comments?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the rating was huge, and the shift to standard and poor was obviously a really good move. I don't know what's up with Moody's, they, all school districts had a problem with it. And they're not really looking at the underlying issues. I think they have an emotional decision based on problems that they've had across the country with sort of school districts. So I think Standard and Poor's looked at it honestly, took a hard look at the underpinnings of our finances, and were very comfortable with that. And thanking PMA for being aggressive and recommending that move. So it's worked in our favor, and you're right, it'll end up to be more than 700,000 for that bond rating increase. And for anything in the future, that's just a huge plus.
Absolutely.
So I absolutely appreciate all the work, Mindy, and a lot of it he has to do with just how well you've worked on this budget over the last few years, and how we've been able to keep those fund balances where they need to be. And we're very fortunate to be in this position.
It was really exciting, actually, during the presentation, to be able to talk about all the great things that we've done, and that we've been fiscally responsible, and also done great things for kids. So we didn't do that at the, you know, sort of the negative, at the expense of being able to offer opportunities. So they were quite impressed with our story. Even Moody's was, really, Moody's at the end of the day was because we were in Illinois. They said we had kind of done everything, so they actually agreed, but they said we just can't give you that increase because you're in Illinois. So, yeah, I think people see the things that we're doing here and are pretty proud of them.
Bob and I have been on this board for over 20 years. It has been our core value and norm to always be fiscally prudent, and not just during the times, but, I mean, so we, and the fund balance policy that we have in place is also shows our strength. And it's just, you know, so it's not just the seven of us right now. I want to thank, you know, there are members of this board that are no longer on this board, but also were part of that.
Absolutely.
It has been a long-term, multiple-decade commitment to financial, you know, we truly are stewards of our taxpayers' dollars, and still can be focused on the kids. And I know not everybody understands all that, but that increase in that financial rating is really phenomenal.
It's really important. But I think that the most important part is, as you said, is that back there, I think we've been aggressive, and we definitely have been forward-thinking with this curriculum and education. And, and as you said, Mindy, we've looked at where to invest the money to have the best impact. And along with our teaching staff and the recommendations that have come down the pipe from all of them, we've tried to implement everything that was going to meet kids where they are and be able to take them to their next level, whatever their state of ability was. So I just want to see us continue to do that, keep the school open, not have to worry about closures. And our focus is on curriculum and making sure kids get the education they need. And we know some kids during the last couple of years have had a more difficult time, and we want to make sure that we get them to the levels that they need to be.
Dean Fisher would be proud.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
First thing, Dean, I really, I mean, Dean's no longer with us, but he really.
But he's with.
He's with.
On the board.
He said he'd show up.
But he's, he's still there. No, but Dean was very, he showed us really well.
He was a wonderful teacher.
The newer ones, he showed us really well.
He was a wonderful teacher.
All right. So did we take the roll, we did not take.
No roll call.
No roll call.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Kattula?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. Then we have the FY '22 budget development update.
Sure, and I'll be very quick about this. We did provide an update, and we talked about the handful of assumptions that had changed between the tentative budget that we approved in June and in August 9th. Some of that were some of the, not all of the salary things that we talked about tonight, but anything that we had been talking about, we've been kind of keeping in line with that and making sure that we were adjusting the budget accordingly. We were looking at the CPI in terms of what we use for the levy, and that's continued to sneak up. It did come back a little bit this month, but it's still in that 5% range. We had just taken it up to 3%, so we'll obviously make another decision on that when we get the final budget approved in September. We did have to update our insurance, which did go up, as you've probably seen across the country. Rates have been pretty unfavorable across the board for school districts in terms of workers' compensation, insurance, property, and casualty. We did work with our broker to try to mitigate those as much as possible, but that's now incorporated into the budget. And I think in terms of what still needs to, in terms of what still needs to be done, obviously, the latest salaries will need to be incorporated, really our grant funding, so our federal grants, any state grants, as well as our COVID spending in our CARES Act. So that's something that we're continually taking a look at and getting input on in terms of how that funding should be spent, because that's not currently in the budget that you'll see. And again, any Evolution 115, we're talking about that program, and kind of strategic plan funding too, will want to put some placeholders in and some estimates for, we probably won't have final numbers, but we'll try to get as close as we can with those. And that'll be part of the kind of major budget presentation that we'll do in September.
So, Mindy, you have 3% for the CPI?
We did, we took it up some. We know that ultimately, that number.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the Fed's meeting in Kansas City, I think, this week. So we'll get more insights into that. Yeah, well, yeah, CPI is five, PPI is seven.
You feel it everywhere.
You feel it everywhere, absolutely everywhere.
Correct. And so we'll talk about, you know, we'll talk about that, obviously, at the Operational Excellence Committee meeting, and then we'll, you know, make sure that we're using a number that everybody's, that everybody's comfortable with. But at this point, the original operating budget surplus was a little bit over $2 million, and it's still at about 1.8 million. So we still even incorporating some of these additional expenses. We were able to mitigate those to a large extent. So again, trying to be good, you know, fiscal stewards. But, you know, the goal is obviously to bring back, you know, a better than, a better than flat, you know, bring back an operating surplus as well as a total surplus as well. So that continues to be our goal.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mindy. Then next, we have the consolidated district plan.
Yeah, the consolidated district plan was something that was presented to the Board of Education. This is at the previous meeting. This is something that we need to do annually. This is mandated, starting all the way back in 2019, as a way for us to provide the state of Illinois with a plan that incorporates titles 1, 2, 3, 4, and then IDEA, which is our special education funding source. And so the approval of this plan allows us to then submit the budget to the state and access the funds.
All right, so need a motion, please?
Motion to approve the title 1, 2, 3, 4, and IDEA Consolidated Applications as Presented. Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Kattula?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. Then we have the district-wide adoption of Mastery Connect data management system that we spent a lot of time talking about a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, we had a presentation, this is work that actually came out of the Transition Committee that started back in February, and it was led by Megan Stedek, who is, I believe, here tonight from the YEA, Kimber Larson, and Beth Amade as well. And so they gave us a presentation at the Student Success Committee meeting. And Nate is here, and I asked Nate to just provide a very brief summary of what this program can do for our district. All right, thank you, Dr. Baugh.
So Mastery Connect, like we discussed at the committee meeting, is a data management system that allows teachers to deliver assessments, usually digitally, even though data can be inputted manually. But most of the time, these assessments are delivered digitally, both formative and summative assessments. And then the platform then disaggregates student data into specific student proficiency levels by standard. And so the nice thing about this platform is that it really allows teachers to see where their students are at and what they're ready to learn. And what this platform would do would be to help us be more responsive throughout the school year. We receive data, especially building-wide data, grade-level data. We get that from MAPS testing, we get that from, we get that from IAR, which you'll have to wait all through the summertime to get and then respond to the following year. The nice thing about this platform is the fact that every outcome assessment, with a click of a button. teachers, administrators, we can break down how a grade level is doing, how a whole building is doing. We can respond if we have a certain need in a certain, in a certain common core area, for example. We can respond to that, and we can be, we can be more fluid with our response to data throughout the school year. Some additional features of this platform, we can pull student data, like student data stays with the child from year to year. So a fifth-grade teacher, for example, can also see if we populate their trackers with previous, you know, fourth-grade primary standards or, you know, I'm forgetting the word here. You know, basically, you know, like pillar standards, if you will. And the teacher can then look at those standards, and they can see how they're doing coming in, so they can help fill those gaps. In addition, that can also allow us to accelerate some students. Say I have a student coming in that I can see already, this student has even moved into some fifth-grade standards, and I'm that fifth-grade teacher, I can respond to that data, and I can have them, you know, I can have them actually accelerate and move ahead and be more responsive. Students and parents can also log into the platform, and they can see their child proficiency levels instantly. So the minute that child takes that assessment in class, that will update their proficiency levels. And the nice thing with that is we can also attach materials and playlists and, you know, pretty much whatever we want to each one of these standards. So a parent at home, a lot of times we'll get, you know, or sometimes we'll get parents that will say, hey, like, what kind of do you teach out at home? And usually, that has to come directly from the teacher. Now, we can put a lot of that within the platform, too. So a parent can look in, they can see, hey, my child is having trouble with this standard. Hey, look, I've got this resource right here, I can go to it, and I can actually help my child learn at home, especially when we get to those older grade levels, too, where mathematics becomes a little more complex, so. But we do have a phased-in implementation plan as well. We know this is going to be a large endeavor. So for our first year, we're going to phase in slowly with people who would like to try out Mastery Connect. And there will be a stipend attached to that, as well as building coaches that can help people along the way. And then our plan is for full implementation, K-6, ELA, and math in 2022, 2023. And at the high school level, full implementation. But that might look just a little bit different because depending on who volunteers for, the early adopters, you know, they have so many different courses and whatnot that we'd have to phase that in as well, so.
Nate, do you know exactly when, so, because obviously you could have students then that are using it in that art, and, you know, some sections that have it and some sections that don't. When's the estimate for full adoption across the district?
For, for K-6, that would be that full adoption for K-6, ELA, and math next year. It would be across the board for actually.
By the start of next year?
Correct, next year, that would be when we roll it out to all, to all subject areas, or rather to.
Because then you can have inconsistent student experience.
Yep, exactly. And then, and really, just from an implementation standpoint, we've been in contact. Stephanie has also been working with us a lot on this, and we've been developing timelines that really, with Mastery Connect, getting all the students into platform. We'll be pushing this, you know, probably we'll start really delivering assessments somewhere around December, just because of all of the, you know, all of the legwork that has to be, you know, done upfront, so.
All right, great. Let's get a motion on it, yeah?
Motion to approve the adoption of the Mastery Connect data management system as presented.
Second.
Moved in second additional discussion?
That's a terrific call.
Absolutely.
Just like how it individualizes education, it makes it transparent, and it brings the home into the school, too.
Absolutely.
As all three things are.
It's visually aesthetic as well. And so sometimes when parents are looking at things, they're looking at a myriad of data points. It's so visually appealing as well. So it's easy to follow, and it's just in time. So it's great, absolutely great.
I think one of the big advantages to it is that you can look at a student's progress, see it from a vertical standpoint within the grade level, as well as a horizontal standpoint of how the student's progressing through the grade levels. It's really terrific, highly recommended, and you guys all did a really great presentation. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank all the members of our Academic Achievement and Growth Committee, all of our faculty. They put a lot of time into vetting different information and really coming up with excellent solutions. I'm really proud of all the work that our faculty and our administration completed.
There's not many solutions, I mean, there's not a lot of solutions that do this either. So this is the, and it's such a seamless integration with their LMS as well.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
It's a very, it's a very intuitive user experience.
And also, their customer service is also, we can always contact them, they're always very receptive to our needs, and they can tailor things to what our district needs, which is really nice.
All right, so need a roll call, please?
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. And then add to buildings and grounds restructuring.
So over the last year, I looked into the buildings and ground structure that we have in place to see how we can grow our growing district. And I researched other districts that are our size or larger than the area to see what they have in place to make their department successful. And I found that they have tiered structures in place so that they can grow as their district grows. And right now, what we have in place, for example, for our maintenance department, is they're all lumped together, and they're all categorized the same thing, even though they all have different skill sets. So this would give our department opportunities to go up in levels and tiers. So we would have, you know, delivery drivers, maintenance specialists, and then we could even go into electrical specialists and HVAC specialists. So that gives them something to work towards. And then for our custodial department, we have our, right now, we do have a structure in there with head custodians and night staff custodians, but we're also looking at having floater custodians, because on average, we have about seven to eight custodians gone a day. And for us to be able to fill in those spots, we have a lot of overtime, a lot of backfill. And this way, we can place custodians where needed throughout the district. A lot of other districts right now have about six to eight floaters, but I'd like to start with three to see how we can place them and how we use them over the next year, especially to fill in right now with COVID and with cleaning. And we have some that are absent, we have a hard time pulling from other schools to clean what needs to be done at night. So I am looking at that as well. I also feel, I know that there was a request made by the committee to add the salary schedules and the cost-saving analysis. So I've added that onto the executive comment. So if you look at our cost-saving analysis, we're using outside contractors. Right now, in the last, over the last year, it shows that we've saved a lot of money by keeping it in-house. Our maintenance supervisor, David O'Dell, does all of our HVAC repairs in-house, and it's brought down the cost extremely on what we do for outside vendors. So that's what I would like to also do by having an electrician in-house, bringing down the cost savings there. I don't have right now in the plan for a plumber for in-house, but I know that with this tiered structure, over time, we can add that to the structure very easily, and so we could possibly bring down those costs as well.
Thanks, Chad.
That's a good, it's a very good point.
I'll make the motion to approve the Buildings and Grounds Department of Restructuring as presented.
Second. Moved in second additional discussion? Heather, I, these are some of the hardest-working people in our district. And we've provided them a pathway to also improve their career and build their tiers, and that's really important. Roll call, please?
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Burks. I'm sorry.
All right, next item is a Director of Marketing and Storytelling.
Yes, just looking to bring a job description to the board for approval this evening to replace the vacancy of Christine Radoski, who, as of last Friday, was her last day as a board. So I'm looking at, I have an outside firm right now that's supporting our transition. I had a conversation with them last week. And looking over the next three or four weeks to use them until we get this position filled, hopefully by the end of September board meeting, to be able to come back to you with a final candidate. Some of the, certainly the responsibilities of this position are the same, that Christine filled with the social media aspect, communication, obviously, as a member of the cabinet, the work that she did. But also expanding and looking to, from the branding standpoint, from the strategic thought standpoint, to working with the board and myself and the cabinet members in each of the schools. Just looking to maybe broaden the scope of the candidate that we're looking for, not necessarily coming just from the educational sector as we look at candidates. So we could expand from the Director of Marketing standpoint, storytelling, we might get some people also in the business sector that are interested in this role. My goal would be to get, we're for Dr. Boffin, I'll post it tomorrow, and begin the process of screening candidates and report.
I need a motion, please?
Motion to approve the Director, motion to approve the Director of Marketing and Storytelling job description as presented. Second.
Moved in second additional discussion?
We're.
Yeah, we're not hiring.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then our last item, we have some policy adoption, so please need a motion.
Motion to approve the District 115 Board of Education policies as presented.
Second.
Moved in second additional discussion? Let's do a roll call for the policy.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
And then we have Superintendent Communications?
Yeah, we'd like to call Alicia, our foundation president, she's still here. We would like to present a recognition to Alicia. So Dr. Dean Romano, who was our former Assistant Superintendent for Operations prior to Mindy. He was recently the President of IASVO School Business Official Association. And as a, as a past president, they are given the opportunity to make a donation to an organization that is important to them to help continue to move things positively forward. And as Dean has shared with us, he was so proud of the amazing work that our foundation has done and that the board has supported student's efforts over the years. So he has chosen to donate $1,400 from IASVO to the Earth Education Foundation. So Alicia, thank you, and. Always nice to give away money. And as Len you alluded to, so we'll welcome our students on Thursday. We have, according to CAPPY, about 650 so new students to our district, which is significant. Now, we don't know exactly yet how many have gone, have left, but that certainly is a large number compared to recent years. So we probably will likely be surpassed by 6,500. I think the high school will be easily over 2,000 this year, or right around 2,000. We're getting big, but all good things and good reasons to celebrate when we have families wanting to move here. Institute Day started today with our staff back in the buildings, and our admin, our teachers, and everybody was certainly in good spirits and going through both some reconnecting activities, but also some things of teacher learning, some things of the school safety with our security personnel. So a lot going on over the next three days in preparation for Thursday. We are ready for Thursday, Heather and her team are putting final touches on the schools. You'll see Heather, you drive around tomorrow in her wear clothes, she's going to be in the trenches going mulch down and digging. I know that they have some cement to be poured, it's one of those things that Heather talked about with David and his team and Heather and her team. You know, we weren't in the past, we had to contract out all of our cement sidewalks, and we're trying to bring that in house and learn the skills. I also want to give the city credit, they've been great partners with this. They've offered opportunities for us to go watch when they do projects and to learn and to share some skillset knowledge, which we've taken advantage of. So again, those shared resources and personnel are wonderful as we move forward. I know Heather and Ryan went over to the library a week or so ago to help them look at their camera systems as they look to add security to their buildings. So a lot of intergovernmental work that's occurring that certainly advantages financially, but also just as a good rapport. Our York PD will be present, just as a nature of goodwill. Even prior to the pandemic, Chief Jensen reached out to me. Every year, he would like to be around our schools for the first two weeks with, either on foot or through the front cars, just to say hi to families, say hi to kids. So if our public sees that, there's no other reason other than Chief Jensen, that's a great value to him, and the relationship we have with the PD and the school district is very important. We are meeting with, we have one meeting with our architects to rejuvenate Evolution 115 or master facility work. So we are coming together on Friday this week to talk to just a group of those communications around this work. And then we have another meeting next week with our architects to continue, we're going to get the high school involved, and then start looking at district-wide communication and giving staff feedback and ultimately getting the board involved. But Stephanie has been instrumental, she's chomped at the bit to put a project plan in place, Revolution 115 with me. So Stephanie's been attending those meetings, as well as Craig and Heather, to bring more people in as we move forward and certainly keep the board up to you. And then just our, Chris O'Shea, as Len communicated, our staff all summer, our administration being ready for this week, just really been a heroic effort and a great team effort. It was nice to hear things today, other than COVID and other than HANS, and to hear teachers talk about student engagement and persistence and grit and instructional practices, and seeing libraries opening up and Stephanie, whether you want to come back to her all. So really excited about the year ahead, lots to accomplish, a lot of ambition, but certainly we're very fortunate to be in the position we are. And I just, again, want to thank the board for the rating for our financial situation. That doesn't happen by chance, and it's not that way everywhere. And we should all be applauded, long before most of us in the state were ever here, laid the foundation for that, and you've just kept it moving. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, so we do have an executive session, so Gary?
Can you hear me? Motion move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel of the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. 5 ILCS 120/2C1. The placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students. 5 ILCS 120/2C10. The purpose or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussion whether a particular parcel should be acquired. 5 ILCS 120/2C5. Litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending in a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that such an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. 5 ILCS 120/2C9.
Second. Roll call, please?
Dr. Katula?
Yep.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. We will have action after the exec committee, but the business meeting is concluded.
And this is. Need to.
For Sean to miss the.
This is. Need a motion to adjourn. To open session. Uh, roll call. We need a roll call. Roll call. Uh, Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Petula?
Yep.
Mr. Pauslins?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And then Dr. Burks?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So a motion, you have a motion to approve the UGP report and authorize legal process to issue written decisions to parents and relevant staff. Give me a second.
Second.
Myself, Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Petula?
Yes.
Mr. Pauslins?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Burks?
Yes. And then we, uh, need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Nine fifteen, office Zoom meeting. Let's go.
Oh, seriously?
Yeah.
Oh, two years on Monday night?
Monday night Zoom.